The flag, where it belongs. I don't know who moved it.
We used them for the press conference over at the election center. So we saw this when they brought it back.
Actually technically it belongs there. It is eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion will start right, go left? Go ahead. Kind of come up a little way so we can hear you.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Brian.
So about a year ago, I got my taxes and I paid close to five thousand dollars for what I'm going to call Lots Creek. It's the joint pack number one with all the county. So I figured, and I had a choice, I could do it over ten years or I could pay it all at once. And I figured, well, good idea to pay it all at once then I don't have to pay the interest and all that. So then this year, I get assessments for the same drainage pack number one. So I started doing some investigation and I'm curious, when did you accept the work for Corey Jorgens? What date was that, if you know?
The contract?
Yeah.
Twenty nineteen, I sent you that this morning and the supervisor minutes after I got your email.
I got it in the email, but I'm asking, when was the date of acceptance of the work? In other words, he's all done with his work and you accepted it?
When the project was closed out.
Correct.
I don't remember when the completion hearing was.
Would be sure to say twenty twenty-two. That was last year. I think I was, was that, honestly, I was here observing.
Do you want to have Marge come down?
Okay.
I don't.
And the reason why I ask that question is, I'm curious how many repairs Bolton and May and Corey Jorgens did after the completion acceptance? How many repairs have they done out there for you guys? Any?
We don't know what the drainage assessments are for. There could have been something besides the ditch. I'm not.
What else would there be?
Well, is it on your drainage assessments that you got, is that work that was done specifically to the ditch or was that different title projects within the district over the past year for which the district is now?
No, this is specific to Lots Creek.
Okay.
Because I also got them for some other drainage that I'm not even, in my opinion, part of, but I got a fifteen dollar assessment because I know. So did we determine the date?
She's not, she's not in the building right now, so.
Oh, no problem. So again, my question is, what percentage of repairs have Corey Jorgens and Bolton May done since the acceptance of the contract? Have they done any?
You'd have to talk to Marge about that.
All right. And then the next question I have is, would you as a board agree to reimburse us our assessments if we determined that Corey Jorgens and Bolton May should have done the repairs according to the contract? In other words, if they were under the contract and were supposed to come back and do repairs due to faulty workmanship or defects and you guys didn't tell them to do that, you went out and hired somebody else to do it, now we're getting, you know, in other words, you're going outside the contract when they should have been doing the repairs?
The engineer said the work was done according to the specifications of the contract at the closing time.
That's great.
From then on, there would have to be something else why you got an assessment for.
No, because if there's defects in their workmanship according to your one contract, it says they have to cover it for a following year. So if you didn't, if you didn't accept it until twenty twenty-two and we're into twenty twenty-three, they should have been fixing any defects. And I'll just give you one example. When they put in the culvert, they put it out too far. So then when the ice dams came, they crushed all the culverts. And then when the water came, it couldn't go. I mean, it was like you closed the end of the hose, so backed up in the fields and then it washed out my field. So, I mean, that's a defect in workmanship. Either A, they didn't place the culverts in there correctly, B, they used inferior products, or C, they didn't pack around the culvert correctly. Now understand, Carter told me you were going to do some kind of drone flight? Okay, who did that?
Bolton May did the drone flight.
All right, did they do that for free?
No.
Okay, are we paying for that?
Yes.
That would probably not be on that assessment though.
No, it'll be for next year, right? Okay, but it would have been defects within the one-year period, correct? And they're on the contract, correct? I mean, shouldn't they be covering anything that's under?
They're not under the same contract as Corey Jorgens.
Understood, but they were the contracted engineer at the same time, right?
This is a different, the drone flight, we just hired them to do the drone flight and to do the video, but we have recently appointed Dickinson Westergaard as the engineer for doing the repairs.
Right, and if it's determined that it's an engineering defect or a contractor defect, will you assess that against the contract that you had for Lots Creek? In other words, if they're liable, why are we paying for it?
So what I'm hearing you say is that if there were things that at the time of completion weren't done in the specifications and now you're having issues, are they?
That's not exactly what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, you guys accepted it, which is cool, but the contract says maintenance to remedy any and all defects that may develop or result from work to be performed within one-year period. It says that right in the contract. So in other words, it's like a warranty. Like, I do work for you guys as a lawyer, for example. I screw up, you come back to me and say, I screwed up. You accepted my work at the time because you thought it was good. I say, oh, let me make that right with you. I'm not going to charge you and fix this, I'm just going to fix it. That's all I'm asking you guys to ask the contractor to do. Have him fix the problems that are occurring out there under his warranty.
Are we still under his warranty though?
Well, probably not today. But anything that occurred within that one-year period is, and yet somehow I'm getting an assessment. You know, I guess my next question is, which supervisor can I correspond with to work on this issue? Because I'd really like to dig into it and figure out who owes what. And I don't want to pay any more than I have to. For example, I'm the one that paid when my field washed out this spring. We had a plant, we didn't have time to wait for you guys to run your drone. We had to get going. I paid twelve hundred dollars to fix my field that you guys aren't paying me back. It was my property I wanted to fix, but I believe it's under the contract. I believe I could potentially go after Jorgens or the Bolton May, whoever screwed up. You know, is it worth me to do that for twelve hundred dollars? Maybe not. Is it worth you guys to do it for a million dollars? Absolutely.
Well, I'll work with you, Brian, and looking into that.
All right. Anything else you want to say, dude? We'll work with Carter.
I can, I can present pictures of what they did in November and I took pictures in April of the bank starting to slough away then. I mean, I've got it on my phone.
We've got proof that things occurred within the one-year period, we believe.
Yeah, I was out there.
So you know it too?
Yeah, I know it.
So we shouldn't be paying this, right? I mean, we should be talking to the contractor.
First thing you got to do is prove that the contractor didn't follow the engineer's original design.
Or the design was defect.
The design, or the design was defect. You have to prove that.
So do we have Westergaard looking into all this?
We're going to ask him that question.
Yeah. And then we want to go back and get reimbursed.
I have conversations with Dickinson Westergaard as far as some of the issues that were happening. We'll continue to look into that, yeah.
So when we get reimbursed, will we as taxpayers be reimbursed for our assessments if we don't owe it?
Yes.
Great.
We haven't, we haven't done any of those repairs yet, so.
Actually, you guys did one repair that I know of. It's over by Ronnie Shaker. They have two culverts. I know some of you guys repaired them where it's stuck out in the vein and was just dropping on dry ground and that washed out really bad. They came in and brought rock in. I don't know who did it, it was done.
We had Wrightsville do a couple of repairs where it was washing the dirt away.
Okay, that must have been one of them. I mean, it was, it was bad, yeah.
Yeah, it needed to be done before it got worse.
It should have been done prior, but it takes time, I understand that. But it is, they, he came in, did a nice job.
Thank you.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for coming in. Stop by and talk to Marge if you've got questions. She'll answer at the drainage clerk.
If she's not there, she's over at the annex, so she should be back in a few.
Okay, I've talked to her a little bit about it.
Yeah, if she's not there, she should be back, she'll.
Okay, thank you.
Summit.
Good morning, how are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. Kaylee Langrell, Summit Carbon Solutions. Also have Richard Dove here with me. He's one of our construction managers. I know you guys probably saw my email sent some updates on the project and just some new information last week, so I'm just here to see if you guys have any follow-up questions. I may not be able to answer them all, but I've got my notepad, so I can get some answers if you guys have anything.
We keep reading all the, you know, this as the world turns kind of stuff.
There's definitely a lot of articles right now, especially with the I U B going on and everything. But if you guys do have any questions, you know, while it's going on or as new things come up, feel free to email me at the same email address that I send you that information on and my phone number's on there as well, so you can give me a call.
Right now, you're at about fifty-two percent in the county? Last time I checked.
Yeah, and that's what it said.
That was the numbers last week, yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't think that it's changed too, too much
I don't think so.
since last week.
What's your prospects for North Dakota and South Dakota?
So North Dakota, on Friday, we were granted the reconsideration. So that one will move forward. I'm not exactly sure how that process works. That does not mean that we have our permit and we're ready to construct. It just means that they're going to look at the changes that we made. I think there might be another shorter hearing and then they'll go from there. But there were some reroutes and things like that in that reconsideration. And in South Dakota, we will have to completely reapply for that one. So it's going to be a little bit longer timeline. But we're hoping, I'm not exactly sure on the timeline of that, when we'll reapply. But when I know, I will get that information to you guys. But that will be a little bit longer process, for sure, than North Dakota.
Does that change your timeline as far as construction?
It definitely will in South Dakota, for sure, because we can't construct in South Dakota. As far as Iowa and the other states, I'm not exactly sure. Richard, do you know if there's going to change?
Yeah, so as of now, construction start date is going to be first quarter twenty-five.
How do hearings go in Fort Dine? You're done in Fort Dine?
No, they're still going on. They just put out a new weekly digest for this week. I think there's some Sierra Club, the Jordi Landowners witnesses will be up there and some others as well. But, you know, we get the weekly digest every week, but they got to get through all the witnesses, so we're not exactly sure when that will end. We have gotten through all the summit witnesses.
So when the, when you're applying through the I U B and let's just say they would look at your route, you know, in light of Dakotas, I know we're a little different, but could they request that you take it, you know, a different, a little bit different route so that it's not quite so close to some people's houses and that sort of thing? Can they request that as part of your condition?
They can, yes, they can. So just to kind of go through the process a little bit, when we first, you know, we have our engineering teams put together a route. We submit that to the I U B way back in twenty-one. They give us a corridor to move within. That was one tract on either side of the original route that we submitted. But as time goes on, obviously, we're in the hearings and people, there were landowners, Exhibit H landowners that came up and offered up different routes that may be outside of that corridor. If the I U B sees that as a good route, then they could request that we make that change. But we would have to get approval from the I U B before we make that change if it's not in the original corridor.
And would that mean, if they did find the route is not suitable to them, would that mean reapplying? Or would that just mean a yes under these conditions?
It depends on how, if it's just landowner by landowner, I think it would be yes under these conditions. If it's a really, really large reroute, then there is potential for us to reapply. I don't really see that happening in Iowa based on the conversations or how the hearings have gone so far. But we're not done yet, so we'll see.
Do you think they should move it to Humboldt County?
Maybe we should let them.
Yeah, that's a pretty big one. Pretty big reroute there.
I kind of think maybe that would be your best plan.
I don't know, I'm going to have my Humboldt County. I think I'd still hear about it. So if you guys are granted your permits and stuff for Iowa, but not yet for the Dakotas or anything like that, will you start construction in Iowa first? Or do you guys have to have all of your permits for everywhere in the state?
So I think, to answer your question, I think that's why our, like Richard said, we moved it back to, or, yeah, back to twenty twenty-five instead of twenty twenty-four because there is this time period where we're going to be having a way on South Dakota now. As far as the state goes, once we get our permit in Iowa, there's no, I don't think there's really anything to stop us from starting construction, but it sounds like we have made the choice based on what's happened in South Dakota to go ahead and push that back. So we're doing construction in all states, you know, at the same time.
Because you're not going to spend the money to start something in Iowa and then something happens in South Dakota that drags it along again or just doesn't happen or whatever.
Exactly. No point in disturbing land if you don't have.
Right, right.
Tax credits, when do they start going away?
I'm not exactly sure on that. Like, when do they stop?
They ratchet down, correct?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure on that process.
The way I understand it, I think there's twelve more years of tax credits. It's not twelve years of credits once you start receiving them. I think there's twelve years of credits from this year's way I understood the conversation. But I'm not a hundred percent on that.
I thought they had a ratcheting fact where they got less or?
They do, they get less over the twelve years, but after twelve years, they go away.
So is there a point where, like, if you get detained till twenty-six, will you tank the program or you haven't decided that yet?
Ask, ask them out.
Yeah. Not that I know of. I haven't heard any conversations of that, but like you said, we're a little bit low on the total poll for that one.
Any other questions?
So have these investors, have they ever thought about switching gears and maybe going after construction of the plant that takes this CO2 in terms of methanol instead of, and doing that versus trying to play across the country and pump it around?
Yeah, the only thing I could say about the methanol is, you know, those methanol companies, they would have to make the same agreement with the ethanol companies that we have. And I know that's very energy intensive, so in order to create the green methanol. So for one ethanol plant to add a small methanol plant next to it, you're looking at a hundred plus windmills being added in order to create the energy needed. And that's a real-life example that we heard from one of the ethanol plants in Wright County, why they chose the pipeline rather than the methanol. So that's really all I can speak on as far as that goes. I don't really know where the investors are at on that.
I think it's still in the works.
What's still in the works?
That somebody had made methanol out of the CO2.
Well, they've got the contracts, they'll get it to work somewhere.
Roy or whatever his name is, I talked to him not that long ago and they're still pursuing it.
Sure.
They probably won't be in Cassuth County either. You got any questions for us?
I think I'm good. If you just feel free to reach out to me anytime. I know it's been a while since I've been in here. But we do want to keep communication open, so.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep, y'all have a great day.
You too.
Anything for public discussion?
Dan, then you'll be.
You approved the agenda minutes dated September twelve. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Everybody had a chance to look at the claims on the iPad. Do I have a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims? Motion by Stanker, second by Josh. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
I thought I talked to her already about this.
Necessary paperwork.
Oh, I understand that.
You've never had any paperwork.
Oh, no, never.
Just think how efficient we could be if we didn't have to shuffle paper.
They'd come up with something else around here and just take this place. That's how that usually works.
Dan, we are up to Veterans Affairs.
All right, well, August shaped up to be a very busy month. For the month of August, I had fifty-two phone calls, forty-eight messages with sixty walk-ins, twenty-five scheduled appointments, one appointment out of office. We did four veteran transports and we had seven sets of hearing aids repaired for some of our veterans. Currently, the number of system records that I have in my latest software program is eleven hundred and seventy-two. I've currently got fifty-one claims in the system to VA. I've got three that are marked ready for decision, fifteen under development that I'm working on, one supplemental claim also that I'm working on and was able to enroll three additional veterans into the healthcare system last month. I have myself and all four commissioners registered for our training in Altoona next month in October. I'll be in attendance for the State Association Board meeting on the ninth of October in Altoona. And I'm currently, I've completed one of five scheduled computer-based courses for self-development and it's in reference to doing a more thorough job on the Camp Lejeune claims, Gulf War particulate matter claims, military sexual trauma claims, and then the benefits delivery of discharge. So those, those training modules go into more detail and I'm looking to try and improve my skills with respect to developing each and every one of those types of claims as I come across them. Last Thursday, I was at the Clay County Fair VSO booth, met with about twelve veterans last Thursday and talked with them. Quite a few from Minnesota, actually. I didn't realize they came down for that, but, so that was interesting. Continuing to focus on my VA healthcare enrollment, I actually have a veteran coming in later on this afternoon from up north Lakota area to enroll. Still working with one veteran to get his shower updated. He talked to me yesterday, he's got to get a second estimate and he hasn't provided that to me yet. When he does, I'll get that taken care of. My new software program has what is called ad hoc capability for reporting. So now I can go in and play with queries and try and tailor and custom a report to what I want to see out of that data. At least it's better than what it was. And I know last time we talked as an alibi, you know, how many veterans currently in the program are deceased? I started building that report and as of Saturday, I had four hundred and sixty-two. Now, what I don't know, if that's completely closed-out record, meaning there's no further action because there's no minor dependent children or spouses or if they're both deceased and I'm kind of working to tighten that picture up, get you a better number. But that's, just kind of learning the ropes on that feature, I came up with four sixty-two at the present time and I'm sure there's going to be more than that. Also included in your packet, just an interesting note on the Iowa Veterans Home newsletter that I enclosed for you to take a look at. And then VA had also published a genetic testing scam, which I thought was kind of interesting. I know there's folks that are kind of into the whole genealogy thing and DNA samples and all that kind of stuff. And apparently someone was, has the ability to threaten folks now with genetic testing scams. So they had put that out as a fraud alert. September's been relatively busy as well. I'm looking to try and get geared up for our school in Altoona. It's going to be unique in the fact that at the Fall Conference, we're not focused so much on CBUs as we are some of the other things that we can dive into, unique to the counties here in Iowa that we can work on. Primarily practical exercise workshops, interview techniques and things of that nature, so we can kind of break out of the structured schoolhouse realm. The other unique thing about that is the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs is now in charge of our training. So while the Education Committee provides some input and somewhat of a liaison to those folks, they're running the show, that's a first for us. So we're kind of got some questions about how that's going to go, but hopefully, you know, things will go well. Also spent two days with the Handicap County VSO, Mr. Jim Welsh, former United States Army military retiree. Spent one day where he came over to the shop over here and we did some left seat, right seat, ride training type things and getting him postured for success. He then wanted to come over and take a look and see how a commission meeting was done. So I invited him back over last week, Thursday, and he got to see that and take some notes and ask the commissioners questions and kind of get their feedback as well. So all in all, pretty good training. He seems to be doing pretty well. Haven't heard anything lately, but I've been in and out of the office quite a bit. So subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Dan?
Getting the new commissioners up and running?
I am. Uh, they are, uh, they have, there are rooms reserved. They have the information packet for the school. They have a map and they have the tentative schedule for Monday for their block of training. So all of that was covered in detail. I just told them to make sure to keep track of any, you know, receipts, parking, that kind of stuff. And then we will take care of that when training's done, so. The only other alibi I got is I have a, a recent veteran that's taken advantage of vocational rehabilitation, small business, looking to do a startup financial consultant company, uh, at a smaller level here in Algonah. So it looks pretty good. I've seen some paperwork in his file yesterday from VA. They approved his program, his business plan, kind of his, uh, debt prevention plan, things of this nature. So it looks pretty good. So I'm hoping he's, he's successful with that. He's got a strong financial background anyway, so. All righty.
Good. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Maureen, do you want to come up? You want to introduce or?
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maureen Hanson with the Third Judicial District Department of Corrections, the one of the boards I was on previously. Josh knows that now.
Yeah, you are.
Welcome to Cassuth County.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Um, I, I just want to first start off by offering my condolences to the City of Algonah and, and Cassuth County for the murder of Officer Graham. And what a humbling picture to drive up and see the squad car just fully covered by flowers and, yeah, mementos. That was quite, um, quite touching. And very, I'm sure it's a hard week, hard week for everybody here, has been. I wanted to, uh, just meet with the board, um, to advise you a little bit about what we do um, and just the changes that have taken place since the first of July. Um, with the first of July, um, there's been a realignment with, um, departments and the eight judicial districts now are part of the Iowa Department of Corrections. So our title now is Iowa Department of Corrections, Third District. And within the Iowa Department of Corrections, there are eight districts and those boundaries haven't changed and nine prisons. And though they haven't changed, um, either. Um, as of August thirty-first, um, there were third, statewide, there were thirty thousand four hundred and ninety-eight individuals on community supervision, one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven in residential facilities, and eight thousand three hundred and seven in prison. And that is, uh, a high capacity for the prisons. In our district, we have sixteen counties. And if you, you kind of picture it as a triangle, Cassuth County is the northeastern edge. It goes across to Lion County, south to Crawford County, and then kind of zigzags. And the ten counties, um, the northernmost ten counties are covered by our office in Sheldon. So Cassuth County is covered by our office in Sheldon. And then the six counties in the southern part of our district are covered by our office in Sioux City. Um, we currently have eighty-five staff for our whole district. And that probation officers, um, residential facility staff, support staff, administrative staff. The classes that we offer at both our Sheldon and our Sioux City locations, uh, our sex offender treatment program, um, a cognitive class called Acceptance and Commitment Therapy, and then IDAP, uh, sorry, we have an anger class as well. And then IDAP is the Iodomestic Abuse Program and that is facilitated by outer agencies right now. We have specialty courts, um, drug courts for Clay, Dickinson, Plymouth and Woodbury Counties and we have a veterans court in Woodbury County. Most of the time, I think, um, the counties want to know about the residential facilities because that has the largest impact on the county um, when clients are sitting in county jail waiting to get into the RTF. And it seems like our wait time continues to be around three months. Um, and w- we have just an overwhelming population of clients coming from all directions, I guess, for our residential facilities. So we have two facilities. One facility is fifty-seven beds. It's an all-male facility that houses sex offenders and men coming out of prison. Then we have, uh, a forty-two bed facility that has sixteen beds for women and twenty-six beds for men. And that male population would be probationers and those serving their, uh, OWI sentence. Instead of going to prison, they go to the facility. So if you think of, most of the county jail clients are probably going to be on probation. They either were sentenced at the time of sentencing, instead of going to prison, the judge says you have to go to the RTF. And sometimes they were given the opportunity for probation, violated their probation, back to court and then sentenced to the RTF. So it's a twenty-six beds for that client for our whole district explains why we have kind of the backlog.
Where is that located?
In Sioux City. Yep. It's, um, we kind of have a campus, I guess, or a big.
Big facility.
Big, yeah, big building. The main floor has the two facilities. There's a separated by hallway and the second floor is probation, parole and administration. Right behind the Hard Rock, right by Palmer Candy, if you ever get to Sioux City. Um, some of our residential data for, uh, two thousand, uh, fiscal year twenty-three. Um, the average length of stay, uh, for an OWI client is five point three months. And the length is primarily because we want them to complete their, uh, substance abuse treatment, at least their primary care, and then get released for aftercare in the community. Uh, our state work release, so those would be the individuals coming out of prison, have not yet made it to parole. Their average length of stay is three point nine months. And then our special sentence, uh, would be our sex offenders. Um, they are five point five months. And again, we want them to complete a certain portion of their sex offender treatment before being, uh, released back into the community. Uh, in total, last fiscal year, we served three hundred and seventy-nine, uh, clients in our, residential facilities. Um, just some additional information about the average time on supervision in total. And, um, so field supervision, uh, probation, the average length of time was twenty point eight months. Parole, so they've been to prison, released and now finishing out their sentence on parole. That's sixteen point seven months. And special sentence, again, that's, uh, for the sex offender population, forty-three point forty-five months. And the length of time for special sentences related to their sentence, they are either sentenced to ten years or lifetime. So that's why that number is pretty, um, dra- dramatically higher than the other categories. And then the percent of revoked to prison. Uh, probation is five percent, parole fifteen percent, and special sentence twelve percent. And this is, those numbers are just revoked to prison. So it doesn't include, say you would have a probationer that violated supervision, had to go to the RTF, violated supervision, did jail time and was done. So those, no, I don't have that data. Um, we're working on it, but we just have the data returned to prison. And then I wanted just to provide some, um, specific information for Cassuth County. Um, as of September first, there were eighty people on active supervision living in Sioux County. Eleven on parole, sixty-one on probation, three special sentence, and five pre-trial release. So they haven't been convicted yet, but they're not being held in custody, so we supervise them to make sure they get back to court. And then we have the levels of supervision range from zero to five. So zero would be very low risk, low violence, low needs. Five would be your higher risk, high needs. We have, um, none on paper supervision. We have thirty-six on level one, twenty-eight on level two. So that's sixty-four of your eighty clients on supervision are on your very lowest level of supervision. And then the remaining are, are on, um, so level three would be like your normal, meet with your PO once a month, pretty average standard level of supervision. There are seven clients on level three, six clients on level four and one level five. And then two, uh, new cases. And then the other, um, bit of information comes from your county attorney's office. So it would be convictions in Cassuth County that resulted in supervision within our district. So they don't necessarily live in Cassuth County, but they were, um, convicted here and are on supervision now, either parole or probation. Uh, one A felony for kidnapping, one B felony that was drug-related. Uh, s- nine C felonies, so that'd be a ten-year. Um, they were related to child endangerment and drug-related. Forty-three D felonies, so D felonies are a five-year prison sentence. Uh, most of them were related to burglary third, domestic assault, forgery, assault, OWI third or drug-related. No felony enhancements. Forty-two aggravated misdemeanors. And they were related to assault, child endangerment, domestic abuse, OWI second and fraud. Ten serious misdemeanors um, related to domestic assault, OWI, uh, possession and harassment. Three simple misdemeanors for domestic assault and disorderly conduct. And then four special sentence convictions, two of them were ten-year and two of them were lifetime. That's kind of an overview of just what's happening district-wide and in your county. Um, our, our board has changed from being a governing board to an advisory board. So I just wanted to make sure that I kept in contact with the counties, that we really cherish the relationships that we have with the law enforcement, um, the probation and parole officers that come to the county and the space that's provided for them to meet uh, with their clients and just the communication in general with law enforcement has been wonderful. And, and we appreciate that. We know that Cassuth County is on the far edge of our district and, and, um, that can be difficult and can be difficult for the clients to receive services. Um, we are doing more and more virtual classes to help, uh, overcome that barrier for clients. And again, I just wanted to reiterate, um, our appreciation and working for the people of the, of Cassuth County and, and law enforcement, um, local and countywide as well. And would answer any questions or hear any concerns that you have?
Any questions, Maureen?
Thanks, Kyle and Joshua, for making the drive all that, all that time. We will meet a couple times a year now instead of four, but anyway, I appreciate, um, I appreciate that and appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you guys later.
See ya.
See ya. May I go?
Yeah, I'll go off the coffee.
At the same time.
We might be over getting the light on too.
I'll, I'll walk down there quick, see if I can find anywhere.
Five minutes for you?
Doesn't take you out, I'm gonna walk.
Watch Isaac run last night.
So I just said, saw you now. I thought, I assumed that was.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Well, they did well last night.
Yeah, they did.
They said the course, I don't know if they put like some gravel down or something. They said there was a couple areas, like Isaac fell at one point.
Oh.
Going up, going up the hill towards the end, he fell.
Loose gravel.
They said it was loose, so.
Yeah.
The, the times were a little slower than last year, so I'm sure.
Yeah.
Probably, everybody else is probably running.
Yeah, yeah.
Making sure they didn't fall.
Yeah. Hit it again.
Cross country me humble last night. Guess we have to take a break.
They're both on the phone.
Oh, okay. We lost Jack.
He just said he was just gonna be right back.
Okay.
Do we want to do any of the drainage stuff quick?
Are they gonna be a little bit?
Are they gonna be a little bit for taking off?
Don't know. Could be.
Oh, we're gonna wait for Jack to come back anyway, too.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions on that stuff for the railroad?
No.
Or any thoughts on it?
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, Spencer's.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we had a, we had a public hearing about it. This is just the official notice that he worked with Jim Hudson on putting together.
Do we want to wait for, for Doug to clarify the minutes? Wait for, did you get the letter?
Doug, did you get one or not?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We won't wait for him to clarify the minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jack.
Doug, we're ready for you for manager of the landfill and transfer station.
Uh, yeah, we discussed this, and I guess I would recommend that the board appoint Lake Stephens as manager of the Cassuth County landfill and transfer station effective today. You're welcome.
I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
Who was that?
Carter. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now motion and second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous.
All right, thank you. Uh, no construction in the road right away. No request for construction of the road right away. Discussion? We did have an accident between two Cassuth County pieces of equipment. Last Tuesday, we had a hood on one of our Western Star trucks that was damaged significantly. So we found a used hood and purchased that last Wednesday. It is being delivered. We hope to make it work for the winter at least, and get it fixed a little bit more permanently. So we'll get that taken care of. Friday, the road department, with respect to Officer Cram, Police Officer Cram, we did line McGregor and the Laverne Sexton Road, that intersection, the road department showing respect. I don't know if anyone from the board was aware of that, but we did. We got resurfacing projects, there's shouldering, a painting. So that should be by the end of the week opened up. The bridge, they're still working on that and looking at, looking at deck port, hoping that will be next week. They are going to airport, I did not go out there yesterday, but my understanding is they are supposed to start this week, so that road will soon be closed. One Hundred Avenue between McGregor and Eighteen. And the DOT project, the color replacement, that was supposed to be opened up yesterday. However, I did not make it up there, so whether they opened it or not, I'm not sure. We still have positions that we are, we are trying to fill. Just received a notice of retirement for considering road deployed, so I'll be advertising for that quickly.
How many open positions in total do we have?
Pardon me?
How many open positions in total do we have then currently?
Five.
Plus the retirement, including the retirement?
That would be including it, the same amount now that the transfer station managers have filled, so. And then we talked a little bit about bridges, and we got the bridge north of Sexton that has seen considerable deterioration in its substructure. I do have, we do have plans ready for two bridges. One, both of them in Prairie Township, one on the west line of Twenty-Six Prairie Township, and that's a little bit south of Dana Horn Dorther's house, if you know where Dana lives. And then we have one, if you go south and right around the corner, going west by George Gunter's place, there's another timber bridge. We have those ready to be let. October tenth, we could let those unless the boards would like to hold these and get that project north of Sexton completed sooner. I believe that I will have enough money, the road department will have enough money in our construction budget to do both of these structures. And then next spring, after winter, we will get those plans for north of Sexton completed and still be able to let that unless prices have come up greatly for bridge construction. So I don't know what the board feels we should do there. But if you want to, we can go ahead and get these signed, get them advertised, have a letting, however you guys would feel.
Are we going to need to post that other bridge if we do the one north of Sexton?
No, if we would, if we would have action as quick as getting it constructed next year, I don't believe posting would be needed, but if we, if we would have to delay it, we will definitely have to post it.
What's everyone's thoughts?
I guess, is that your recommendation to do the two, let the two here this fall and pursue the other one this next year, north of Sexton?
I believe we can do that, yes, again, unless something would, prices would be drastically high. But it's gonna push back some of the other projects that we planned.
Right.
So we'll have to move on a little bit.
I guess my concern would be, you know, how this winter will affect that bridge if it's already deteriorating pretty good, you know, is it gonna make it unsafe by spring?
Well, it's not gonna be unsafe as long as people travel and obey the rules as far as embargo's on the bridge. I guess, I mean, obviously, if somebody is overloaded and does more damage to that structure, then it will happen. The season is not going to affect it. It's a matter that those piling are sixty years old, and they deteriorate to a point where they only estimated thirty to forty percent capacity under people now. So if we, if we do not do anything, that's why we would have to lower the cost. As far as safety, as long as, I mean, it's pretty much gonna be limited to ten-ton single axle vehicles and twenty, twenty-ton, half of what legal loads are.
Well, what's your recommendation as far as priority between these two versus the one in Sexton or other projects that we'd have to push back for?
We're, we're, these bridges, we receive money from windmills. Million and a half dollars from the Cassuth Wind Energy Project. And the board and I, when we received that money, discussed that, and there were three timber bridges down in that area, that we were going to use that money to replace those. As far as priority, these have been, in fact, one of them was in a program and to be replaced, and the board decided to take it out because it was on a gravel road, and at the time, the board didn't feel it was even necessary. Now, when the bridge gets closed, it's gonna be necessary to construct it. The landlords are not going to say it's not a priority. But, you know, so, these bridges are posted. The one toward Gunter's, there's, there's always, there's loaded trucks that go over that, and then they go to the intersection, and they get stuck. They can't get through the intersection, or they do damage at the bridge to the east of this intersection. It's well, well-signed, and there's posted bridge up there. Why truckers even try to, try to take that road, but they do. But as far as priorities, we're gonna have to make some decisions. We're, we're gonna be to the point this next fiscal year, if revenue does not change, we're gonna have to say, what are the priorities? Because we don't have enough money to resurface roads for construction. We're not gonna have money for, for bridges. And less federal funds, state funds, or alternate funds come in, the local funds just aren't keeping up with prices of construction materials. And that's something, I don't know if it's important to drive to a bridge and not be able to go over it, or it's important to go over a bridge, but not necessarily drive to it. That's something we gotta start, you know, we'll have to really start looking at.
I, I mean, I feel favorable going forward as you come.
Well, we will get these advertised then, and get them lent if you guys will sign those in.
Do you know when the projected completion date for that Taitanka Road Bridge is?
Well, once they, once they pour the deck, I mean, they've still got three to four weeks.
Yep.
If we get, if everything goes well on it.
Sure.
So hopefully that'll be the case. That's all that I have.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Got me a call, Marge.
Did you wanna ask me about this? Doug?
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 Hey, we'll be ready for you for Drain Ninety next. Thanks. Why you just gave me five minutes, so I don't really, what was the date for?
I don't know where you went, thanks for Marge.
I don't know if we really, I mean, it's just five minutes.
I listened to the recording, and that's exactly what you said in the meeting, so you'll have to decide if you want to change it or not. But when I listened to it, it said the first part, and then later you can clarify by saying per whatever the end part was. And so, 'cause I thought maybe I mistyped, but no, it's exactly how you made the motion. So you'll have to decide if you want to change the motion or not.
We can talk about that during board discussion here then. Marge, we are up for the notice to repair for Drain Ninety. Do you have anything besides what was in our board packet?
No, just a few of that.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion to approve the notice for repair.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions about the notice? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. Then we have a request for waiver for Drain Four, lateral eleven. Marge, you wanna share about this, or do you want me to highlight it quick?
It's, so the landowner requested if there could be a waiver for a large amount that they had. No one else had requested, so I said I could bring it to the board if they would. And it's up to you if you want to offer it.
It was, it was not one that we had planned waivers for previously, but Marge said there's still time. If, if they came in and signed the paperwork, we could do that if it was okay with the board, so. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to allow waivers for this landowner.
What, yeah, what year, how many?
What, what, or twenty years?
Ten years, I would think would be, would be sufficient. Is that your motion? Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we are up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay. Two different things. First, I don't know if you noticed the note, and with the credit card bills today, we've talked about this before, and I talked about this with Krista, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We passed a policy that says we can't put meals on credit cards. Krista has her own board, so hers is a little different. Her, her policy with her board does not say that she is allowed to do that. But we keep seeing charges on the credit card. We don't let anybody else in the county do that, we give them back to them until they can. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that she is still doing that, and her policy does not say that she is allowed to, and our county policy says she cannot.
So I discussed that with her a little while ago, and talked to her about opening an account with, you know, the grocery stores, wherever she purchased that, purchases that stuff from.
Well, these are like actual meals, like when she's up to eat.
Like on a, okay.
This is like, this one is like.
Okay, okay, that's, that was a different one.
Or paid by cash or whatever, or a personal county card.
Yeah, so you guys didn't approve this one, but.
Do you want to go talk to her together after the meeting on that, or? Do you want to talk?
I can talk to her about it.
Okay.
Then I got an email from Judge Sandu's office last week, and he was asking about the possibility of installing some type of bulletproof window with the clerk's office. This has been in discussion before, but especially after the issues of last week. The gentleman who is a suspect in the murder of Officer Cram was in the building the day before it happened. So I, in his email, he talks about how we want to make sure that the clerk's office on the third floor is secure. So he had talked about other counties that have bulletproof glass in the clerk's office. One county, Emmett County, recently did that. And so he asked them to send me the quotes, the invoices for Interstate, which is the bulletproof glass, and then the other company that did the installation, of what it would cost, just about twelve thousand dollars for the glass, and about two thousand dollars for the installation. I told them that I would bring that up to you guys and talk to you about it this morning, and see what you wanted to do, we could put it on the, on an agenda item, get our own quote if you feel so. We can have them, have a couple companies come in and look at it, and, and bring it up again if you guys choose to do so. I did tell him that I also thought that that was something that I was.
Would that kind of tie in with what we are already working on completing up there? Would it be possible to tie that in and potentially use that same funding source?
Absolutely, that would be good.
I think that that, we should do that. I don't know if we need to tack it on to what's already being worked on, or we need to have a separate project for that.
Just, I would say separate project, doing it in conjunction, 'cause it doesn't need to be tied in with door locks.
It has to be separate because of the.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I would say a couple, get a couple votes and put it back on the agenda would be my opinion.
Okay, and we will work on that then.
Yeah, it's probably a, we have local glass companies. We should have our local people out there.
Yeah, absolutely, I will contact them, okay. And then budget amendment will be put, will be published in the paper tomorrow and Thursday. And then again, next week, we have the. And then again, next week, we have the budget amendment hearing October third. I did email you a copy of what's being, what will be printed in the paper tomorrow and Thursday. So you can look at that if you have any questions, you can let me know. And then last thing was, um, the letter that I received from Doug that I think he all gave to you about, um, the minutes from the August third, or August eighth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting, um. He thinks that the motion's ambiguous. I did go in and check the motion to make sure that I had not typed it incorrectly. Um, the motion, I think, is, is typed the way it was said in the, in the meeting. So, um, I just wanted to talk to you about, um, if you guys wanna respond or how you wanna go forward with this. The, I think the option, um, would be if you're gonna change your motion.
I mean, I think it's pretty simple. If someone was gonna read that motion, it's, it's kind of, it's climate, I mean, it's part of it's a decision for someone else to decide, you know, I don't, I don't know how you board that better.
I
I, maybe that, maybe I guess you could, you could change it to, you know, as section eleven of the contract, contract reads, you know, what, this can be amended revised, et cetera, per written approval from the board and the engineer. You could, you could change the language to contingent upon written approval, and maybe that would be
Or after, uh, you know, approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, you could change that. But if you decided to do that, we'd have to have it on next week's agenda for you to change the motion, I think.
Oh.
Well, I, I think you'd have to go back and resend the previous motion and and replace it.
I think that's what, have you, I mean, have you received any, if you've entered complaints to your office?
No, I haven't, just, just Doug's letter.
Okay.
I, I think the videos and discussion that happened in the boardroom is fairly self-explanatory for anyone who's watching it. I don't, I don't see a need to change the minutes when they're out here.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, then I, I won't put anything in the agenda for next week then for that.
Has anyone received any response as far as an acceptance? I know in here, or not an acceptance, it says in here, you did not accept any amended language.
No.
It does, it's
Okay.
Okay, then that's all I have.
Does anyone want any further discussion on this topic next week, or?
So you three are the ones that are bringing it forward, so you guys can be very excited to jump in. Well, I think that if he, if he wants to, you know, more clarify or, or discussion on, I mean, and do the same as everybody else and have it put on, you know, put on the agenda, request an agenda item for it.
What do we want, um?
We could, I mean, if, if you want, maybe it would be best to just have it on the agenda as a discussion item and we can clarify it in the boardroom, and then you don't have to go through the whole rescinding and adopting. I mean, we could always just say, hey, this was section eleven, and we're doing that right now, cause it's recorded. Section eleven of the contract says that this contract may be amended, revised, renewed or extended at any time only by written approval of the board and the engineer. So the board gave written approval, the engineer has not, that's what it meant by per written approval.
So would it be acceptable to everyone to have on the agenda next week, a discussion about, um, the minutes from August eighth next week?
Yeah, we can, we should really be discussing it, it's not on the agenda anyway, so.
Well, I mean, today it's for discussion, but
Yeah, for discussion, it's a letter.
We could, we could put it on next week's, and we can even reference the action to change the engineer's contract on the next week's agenda, but I, I agree, I think a discussion about it to clarify would be sufficient.
I mean, if, if he's getting some feedback or issues in regards to that, then that'd be fine.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else, Tammy?
Um, no, that's it, but, um, do you want on there just to talk about, um, the minutes? Or do you want on there to talk about the contract too, or how do you want that?
Just the minutes.
Just the minutes, okay.
Yeah. Okay, we have board discussion, committee reports, Jack, do you have any reports?
Next week, we have meetings.
Aren't I have media action coming up, but nobody needs last week. Uh, I have meetings last week here.
Um, I have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center on Friday, so that's coming up for me.
Well, I, I guess, I'm thinking about it, I did have a, uh, thanks, Mark. Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Yep, thanks.
I did have someone reach out to me in regards to the incident this past week that, um, the public wasn't notified of the, the threat in the community until two plus hours after, you know, the phone notification. I'm just wondering, he was concerned, one of that brought up during the board discussion, um, how, how was our emergency response?
That's handled by, I think that's handled by the Algonquin Police Department, because dispatch would be the one that would send that out, so, um, and they're
I think that'd be emergency management.
I'm sure they knew about, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that things were being taken care of, but just the, the notification.
Yeah, it goes through dispatch, so, um, dispatch sends it out, I believe, so, um, but I could be mistaken, it could be
Well, I think there may have been other avenues of notifying the public, because there
I, I, I do know locally, uh, what the, the word was out much earlier than that official notification came, um.
Yeah.
So the, there was public that was aware of the situation before that was out.
Maybe emergency management does do it, I'm not sure.
I think it is through, cause, uh, Chrisa works with like the alert, so, so
It was urgent, it was an accounting alert.
Yeah, so, I don't know who that would
I
I believe it's EMA, so
Okay.
EMA, yeah.
Okay. That's all.
You said everything?
I think don't
Were you guys just here for the, the drainage stuff?
Yeah, D D four by eleven, I was figuring if you guys were waving one, I should wave everybody, or at least give them the option.
Did you make any requests?
Well, I didn't think there was one to be made, because you guys decided you were just gonna spread it. So you're treating somebody special, you know, that's what you're doing.
I have not received one phone call from anyone requesting a waiver for this. We got
Because you never gave them one. That's supposed to be decided when the project's completed. Not Johnny come late, they go, by the way, two weeks before the taxes are due. You guys send me bills all the time, you don't give me a chance to wait, and you say pay it. You're gonna do it for one, you better do it for all, and then you better give everybody notes to
Any thoughts?
Okay. Go back, change it, offer, offer to everybody, you know, I don't know.
We only got a request from one person, one landowner, so, anyone could have asked a question.
Another, another day.
Yeah. Well, is there any further business to come before the good of Cassuth County? Not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Coming.
You have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion, motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, we return it to nine nineteen.